Five.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to call the Monday, October 25th, 2021 School Board Meeting to Order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Roche.
Here.
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Lalaberty.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Chair Diaz.
Here.
At six present, at six o'clock.
Thank you, and I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. So, first up is the approval of our meeting agenda in minutes. And I'll ask for a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda for Monday, October 25th, 2021, as well as the committee of the whole meeting minutes, October 11th, 2021, the school board meeting minutes for October 11th, 2021, and the school board meeting work session for October 14th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Monica. Anybody else?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, and we will move on to the superintendent report for tonight.
Thank you. So, our superintendent update for October 25th is as follows. We have a new meal program with second harvest that is going to be based out of our Central Square site, and will offer take and bake meals for members of our community that need a meal, and there's no questions asked. You're welcome to stop by. Like you said, take and bake, so you can see, like, this one just looks like chicken inside dish. And you're able to come in, the meals are available Monday through Saturday, and I'll just say while supplies last. So today was our first day, had a lot of attraction in day one, but they're just single-size, single-serve meals or family-style, like a four-piece, family-style meal. So you can get a one-serving or a four-serving, and should be a great support for a number of members of our community. We have an upcoming fall theater performance. It's a musical called Something Rotten, and it's just really a funny twist on people that try to make a heist on one of Shakespeare's plays. And, like, instead of, they think that they have cracked the code and they got the inside track on a Shakespeare play, and so instead of calling it, like, Hamlet, they call it Omelette. There was some miscommunication, and they start going down the omelette road. But they thought they had all the answers, and things went a little haywire. So that's November 12th and 13th at 7:00 p.m., November 14th at 2:00 p.m. Our tickets are on our website. You can also get in-person tickets and livestream as well. We have a few highlights from around our district. Here's a shot at Capoja with Unity Day. So a day to stand up against bullying, to wear orange, and to be acting in unity together against that. We had a number of middle-school kindness focus. This is students writing positive messages about how they were kind and showing positive action toward one another. They're able to hang it on the poster and make us a giant kindness poster at our middle-school site. This is just a fun idea, called School of Fish, middle-school students learning the fishing tips from a pro. You can see the room's packed. The kids are excited, not just about the poles, but learning to tie the knot, a real fishing knot, and just getting coaching and supporting by Mike Frisch and a sponsorship from our SSP Ed Foundation. Here's just a kind of fun in-class assignment, candy neurons, using candy to kind of lay out the neuron itself for some of our 11th and 12th grade psychology students, and just a couple of quick upcoming calendar of events. So November 4th and 11th, we have our Family Connections Middle School and Elementary Conference dates. We also have November 12th, we have No School for Students, and the 24th through the 26th is our Thanksgiving break. I think that's it, and we'll go back to you.
Great, thank you. We're kind of going out of order tonight, but going up the agenda. There are no public listening sessions to report for tonight. Are we ready for Quality in Action?
Just keep moving for just a little bit.
Keep moving, all right. So we'll move down now, if you're following along. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent item on tonight's agenda, which include the financial claims and bills payable and staffing as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Great, thanks so much. I think we're ready.
Those in favor?
Oh, yes, I forgot to finish up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, and that motion carries. We'll hold policy review, no, we'll, yes, we'll hold policy review.
Are you feeling ready?
While we do...
Because we could go a few more minutes if you need to. Would you like us to keep going for...
We're just short of students.
Yep.
For sure he'd be here.
Yes.
Do you want to wait a couple minutes, see if he comes?
If you have one more, yeah.
We told, we...
JJ doesn't want to do it alone.
All right, we've got more. We've got more JJ to do.
Sounds good.
All right. So no policies for review tonight. And we do have three business items before us for approval tonight. And the first item is to approve the South St. Paul School Board approved the acceptance of gifts resolution. Lisa, would you read that resolution?
Be it resolved that the School Board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, accept the following donations as indicated. Donation amount of $4,000 donated to Lincoln Center Elementary and Capoja Education Center from the South St. Paul Lions, and the purpose is for student agendas.
Great. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thanks, John. Second?
Second.
Wonderful.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
I'd like to just say thank you to the Lions.
Yes.
Year after year, every year that I've been here, they've come forward and supported the agendas and planners for our kids, and so at both of our elementary schools, it's been a gift from the Lions, and it's truly a gift for the families as well. So hats off to the Lions, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Lisa, we have to do a roll call?
We do, yep. Inspector Walker.
Yes.
Inspector Roche.
Yes.
Inspector Weber.
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty.
Yes.
Inspector Arndt.
Yes.
Inspector Felton.
Yes.
Chair Diaz.
Yes.
At seven a.m.
And the motion carries. And the second item, business item that we have tonight, is approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve scheduling a special work session on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, at 4:30 in the District Office Conference Room. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Discussion? I actually have something to say on my own discussion question. For folks out in the audience, as you know, Dr. Weber has announced his retirement plans. This meeting is a meeting with the Minnesota School Board Association. It's a presentation that they give to help boards do a superintendent search. So this is something that all board members are going to be, take a part in, and be able to learn more about what our process is going forward. And we'll keep you all informed as that happens. Great, oh, I forgot, I have one more thing. So...
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, and that motion carries. And our third item for approval is approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2021-22 Internal Administrator Substitute Rate. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Great, and a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion?
So maybe just a minute of explanation.
Sure.
You know that we have teacher subs in our building, or paraprofessional subs in our building, or other roles as needed as well, but this is when an administrator is absent, making sure that we keep the system running for administrators too, and making sure that we have licensed teachers that have administrative degrees as needed and when possible, to be able to fill in as needed. Just wanted to give a little color commentary as well.
Great, appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Wonderful, and so we're going back up the agenda to our Quality in Action with Great Lincoln Center and their principal, Teresa Starkman. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, South St. Paul Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm thrilled to be here this evening to highlight our Media Tech Specialist Program. Media Technology is the center for information and communication. It provides our students with the skills for digital citizenship, coding, and media balance, which is essentially teaching them when to put screens down. All of these are building the blocks to our world's best workforce. The Media Tech Program came about because the school community and parents asked for it, and the district responded. So I'm pleased to introduce to you Marie Hidukovich, who is the Lincoln Center Media Tech Specialist, and she's brought a special guest with us this evening.
I have to change a name in the script because I'm so used to writing Frank that I wrote Frank instead of Bill. Sorry. I never have to...
So I have to give JJ the credit.
First time.
First time.
Sorry, I apologize. Like Ms. Starkman said, I'm Marie Hidukovich. This is my third year in South St. Paul. This, my first year is full-time, so thanks for that. But I've been teaching Media Tech at Lincoln the entire time that I've been in South St. Paul, and last year, in one of our many Google Meet staff meetings, we were talking about how to better deliver our morning announcements, given that 20% of our students were not here to hear them on the overhead. And I wish I could take credit for it, but Diane, Tiffany, and Ashley Becker were like, "Let's do video announcements," and if it's right into my curriculum, and especially with the new media arts standards being added over the summer that I am now teaching, that's right in. So we started working on it. We were distance at the time, so we just started working on how it was going to look when we came back because it was that little march where the state sent Lincoln back home for a couple weeks, and what it would look like when we came back, and so we worked, started out working with just our 5th grade ambassadors, which I believe you all know what our ambassadors are, because I know they've been Quality in Action before. And so we kind of started a beta program, and then we expanded it to all of our 5th grade classes. Our 5th grade classes all have specialists immediately in the morning, so at 8:20, they're knocking on our door, waiting to come in. And so we film announcements for the following day. They're not live, they're pre-recorded. And last year, it took us almost the entire hour for the last quarter of school to film the announcements, and then probably a couple hours of editing at night, around 30 takes of every single announcement. Because we didn't know what we were doing, we jumped into it within about a week. I think we started recording when we got back to school. But it was worth it because we were able to not only give the announcements out to our distance classes, but Kim Bowers class last year did a play, and they were a distance class. So we were able to record that play and show highlights on the announcements. So we were able to bring those distance classes that weren't necessarily doing the announcements back into the community and showcase them a little bit as well. And also, with Ms. Cassius and Ms. Weir, who are our 5th grade distance teachers, I was able to just do screen recordings of two of their students reading the announcements and make a video out of that. So it was a really great way to keep everybody involved in the bizarre year that we had last year. And we learned a lot, and as a result, it now takes us about 10, 15 minutes to record announcements,
Wow.
which is a giant improvement, so we actually get to go back to having our media and tech lessons, and then we record the last 15 minutes of class. And also, I get to give so much more over to the students so that they, we have a student director every day. I don't have to do the directing anymore, so they have a ton of voice and choice. They write the scripts. And then our 4th graders are actually learning how to do the editing, so that 5th grade finishes recording first hour, and then two 4th graders are assigned to do the editing of the announcements when they come in the next hour. So it is soon to be 100% student-run, which is kind of my goal in everything, is to have the kids do it. So I talked to Connor Murphy, and he recommended a program, so that's what we're teaching the 4th graders with. And then I want to give a shout-out to Jamie Burke-Told because when people couldn't hear us, she found us microphones. And we didn't have recording devices, so Ashley Becker got us a grant. And really, all I did was have the class time. Everyone else did all this work and deserve so much praise for all of this. But every day, we have a greeting. We include a PYP learner profile focus. This week's PYP focus is communications. We're talking about communication isn't just talking to people, it's also listening, and actually listening, not planning what you're going to say next. We do any special announcements today. We reminded students to walk their bikes down the ramp at school at the end of the day and not ride them and mow down kindergartners. We do a weather forecast for the day, a special feature, which is the pledge on Mondays, a sign of the week that our DHH teachers teach the entire school, a different sign language sign. Fun fact, cheesy jokes, announcing the principal praise winners, announcing the Golden Ave winners, so we showcase our PBIS program as well. And then we end every episode with our Challenges Cheer at Lincoln Center, which is PYP packers are safe, respectful, responsible. Today I may face some challenges, but I know I'm up for the challenge. So I have a student here with me. I was aiming for three, but, so, nope, now I have two.
Yay.
Surprise! I have two now. Should look familiar.
Yeah, I recognize that boy.
She's got a suit on, about to turn over to you, Sam.
No, I'm sorry, are we too late?
No, you're not. There you go. I had, I had prepared one-person script and two-person script. So, just walking out their scripts. Sam, read that real fast. So JJ and Sam are here. They are going to actually ask all of you a couple questions, and I am going to record it, and then we will edit it into our morning announcements to show at Lincoln Center tomorrow. I can, if you'd like, I can email you the link to the News Network YouTube channel.
Yes, please.
You can see all of the announcements as well.
That'd be great. Yes.
All right, are you two ready?
Thank you, Signe.
Yeah, okay, no, Sam, come here.
Keep coming, all the way up. We want you at the microphones.
Microphone. Yeah.
Yeah, so you're going to ask, you're going to read through the script, you're going to take turns. I'm going to record it, just like we're in the classroom, okay? No, you can put it down because we'll use these. Just like we're in the classroom, this is, it's called a niographer, and it's one of the things that PBIS Frank gave us, and it enables someone to hold it a little steadier during older recording, instead of just holding it up, having like... When we first started recording announcements, we used my phone, and sometimes it was like a beam of motion. Okay, are you two ready?
Yes. Thank you, Signe. I'm at the school board meeting, talking to the school board about LCNN, and taking the chance to ask them some questions. In case you didn't know, the school board is a group community of members who are elected to make decisions to keep those of us in school safe in learning. Our school board members are Wendy Felton, John Roush, Nikki Lalaberty, Linda Diaz, Chris Walker, Monica Weber, and Frank, and Bill Arndt.
I'm not going to get away from that one, am I, John?
I'll ask a question. If there, if each of you could answer, then JJ will ask the second question. What made you want to join the school board meeting?
Great question. Wendy, why don't we start with you?
Now, I have been on the school board for over 20 years. I came on here actually to give thanks to the South St. Paul School District for educating my three children, and also my grandchildren attended here for several years. So it was for me to give thank you to everything that the district has done for my family. Thank you.
I wanted to be a part of making great schools in the community I live in.
Hello, Sam. I think I did because I wanted to stay involved in the community. After retiring, I felt kind of disconnected from the schools and the community, and so I wanted to be back in a part of it, and because I think we have great schools and we have great kids. So that's why I did.
Hi, I'm Linda. I am on my third, just finishing my third year in the school board. I ran because, for a couple reasons. I'm a former teacher, former school counselor, and I really wanted to get back into thinking about schools and kids again after being away from that for a while. And then also, as a person of color, I wanted to make sure that I was representing the families and the kids that we serve in South St. Paul, and that has changed so much from when I went here. So I wanted to make sure that the board also looks like the community that we serve.
I'm waiting for my picture to come up. There we go. I'm Chris Walker. I ran for school board because I have two children that graduated from South St. Paul High School, and were, our family was well-served by the school district, and I wanted to give back a little bit and thank them for what they did for our family. And there was an opening, so I was happy to fill that and keep the quality of the schools to the level it was when my children were there.
I'm Monica Weber. This is my first year on the school board, and I ran because I really wanted to serve my community, and I thought this would be a great way to get started.
That's it?
That's it.
I'm trying to figure out if my name is Bill or Frank. You think it's Bill? Okay. My name is Bill Arndt. I've been on the board for three years. And I ran because my son Frank Arndt has been a teacher here for 25 years, and my wife Liz was a teacher for 40 years. And my grandmother went to school here, my mother went to school here, and I graduated from South St. Paul, and my son's graduated from South St. Paul. So I wanted to help carry on the, you know, the tradition and make sure that everybody's safe and happy and well-educated. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question is, what is your favorite part of being on the school board?
Bill, yeah, we'll start this end.
Oh, this is going to be a hard one to follow. Can I be really honest, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's when our chair, Linda Diaz, says, you know, "Okay, we are done for the night." We're adjourned.
My favorite thing about serving on the school board is just getting to meet all the really, really cool people, whether they're teachers, staff, serving with this board. I didn't know any of these people, really, before I started my service, and it's been just so fantastic to get to meet people.
My favorite part is the celebrations, especially the graduations. There's so much effort that goes in, and not so much even at our level, but with the staff and the schools, you know, the teachers and everyone else involved with keeping the schools running. Typically, what we do is set a direction and then try and get out of the way and let them run the schools. They do a fabulous job, but it always ends up with the celebration, the graduations. And that's kind of the cherry on the top, you know, we see the culmination of everything that, you know, all the efforts that they put in, and we celebrate that, and that's my favorite part.
I would say my favorite part is hearing about what's happening in schools. The good, the hard, the funny, how you're problem-solving things. I love to know that. I love to know what's working, what's not working, because I think that's how people learn. That's how community learns about what's happening in schools. That's how kids learn. That's how adults learn. So I like when you all come and tell us about what you're doing.
Yes, I would say that's my favorite part, too, is seeing your bright, shiny faces standing here in front of us so that we actually are seeing education in action. So from the little ones in preschool all the way up to the senior high kids, when they come and talk with us and show us what they're doing, that gives me hope, and it makes me feel like we're on the right track here. So thank you for being here tonight. It's great.
My favorite part is when I find other people in our community who also believe in our school, and are champions of the thing that we do in our community.
My favorite things is attending events, like a couple other board members have stated. Attending graduations, going to different things in the buildings. Like this past fall, welcoming students on the first day of school was truly an honor. And also, as a board member, representing South St. Paul schools and different committees, as I also serve on Intermediate 917 as their representative. Really makes me feel positive that I'm there and honoring and helping any special education students that we may have that need extra assistance. So it's truly an honor and a privilege to attend events and represent South St. Paul.
Thank you. We thank you for taking the time to share with us. And thank you for being a part of our education. That's all from the school board meeting. Back to you, Signe.
That'll transition back to what we recorded this morning in 5th grade for tomorrow's announcements, where Signe says, "And we're off to Sam and JJ." So, do you have any questions for any of us?
What editing software do you use?
So I, when, I'm still currently doing the editing, and I am a Mac person, so I use iMovie, but the, I talked to Connor Murphy, our tech integrationist, and he suggested WeVideo because it is cloud-based, and so with the Chromebooks, they can just access it on the cloud. We're hoping for the foundation to pay for license for us so that we can use it, because as of right now, we can only upload five minutes a month. So until we get that, which I think should probably happen, I'll just keep using iMovie, but WeVideo because it's cloud-based.
Great, any other questions?
I have a question, of course. What are you guys going to be for Halloween? Go ahead.
I'm going to be this guy with a cloak with a stitched face.
Your mask is on, and I can't understand a word you're saying. Go ahead.
I'm going to be this guy with a cloak and a stitched face.
Oh, like a zombie.
Eck.
Sort of, okay. How about you, JJ?
I'm being Scream Queens with my two best friends, Signe.
Okay.
And it's a group costume. It's like a movie.
Oh.
Well, a show, basically.
Okay, I have one more question for you, too, and they're just going to get dumber, but, you know, just humor me for a minute, okay? I was thinking of going as a lima bean this year, because everybody loves lima beans, right?
No.
No.
So how would I do it?
I don't know. Maybe just paint your face green and put a green hat on.
Lima beans are white.
Oh.
But I could paint it green.
Yeah, you could paint it green, and then just put a white hat on.
A green lima bean.
Yeah.
Or you could just change it to a pea. There you go.
Thanks for your help, guys. Come in tonight, okay?
Yeah.
John, did you have something?
Oh, what's your favorite part about being the news team?
Because I like to be in the announcements. Because I like to be represented as a responsible packer to the packer community.
Awesome.
Wonderful.
Great answer. Great college answer.
As 5th graders, we should represent the school because we're the oldest in the school. And next year, we'll be at the high school, so this year would be a really good chance to represent the school.
Yeah, that's great.
Are you having...
That's a great job because he's one of the few people I don't have to constantly stay put. I don't have to constantly say, "Put your mask over your nose because we're recording the announcements." And that being example.
Great job.
He is being a responsible.
Yeah.
You guys having fun doing this?
Yes.
Good.
You're getting lots of skills, that's for sure.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for coming. Thanks for interviewing us. That'll be fun to see.
Mr. Arndt, I'm really sorry.
What's that?
I'm really sorry about the name.
No, I forgive you, and it's, it is the first time it's happened, and, you know. I did have a one, a story about my son was interviewing a boy at Lincoln Center that I had met at Burger King, and he excitedly said, "Are you Bill Arndt's son?" And that was a first. A lot of people have asked if I was Frank Arndt's dad, but I did get one Bill Arndt's son.
He'll never forget.
Yeah, and JJ, I want to remind you, get more exercise and walk to school every day, okay? Promise me you will do that?
Yeah. Well, I get exercise every day. Because I walk to school.
You know, I know you're quite a ways from the school, and I want to see you take those steps every day, okay?
Yeah.
So JJ was my neighbor. He was 43 steps from school. Okay, I want to give you guys a hand.
Well done, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Well worth the wait.
Yes, thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you, Principal Starkman.
I'll see you Saturday.
See you Saturday.
Okay.
And that's why we do what we do.
That's it.
Well, that wraps up all of our items for tonight except for the reports, board reports, and informational items. So we can start, we'll go back to Wendy.
Oh, okay. The first thing, as Dr. Weber had mentioned, the, the play at the secondary building. Tickets are on sale. You can order them online, or you can also order it virtually. So that's kind of fun if you want to stay home on a weeknight, weekend night, and watch the play in the comfort of your home. You can always do that. And as I've mentioned a couple times before, the Educational Foundation Gala is coming up on Thursday, November 18. Tickets are on sale right now. They are $50 each, are available at the Education Foundation office on Murray Avenue. We look forward to your support. There is a live and a silent auction that evening. So it's a lot of fun. It's a great buffet dinner, so we encourage people to come. And the other thing is, with this Sunday being Halloween on Murray Avenue, as you know, the great South St. Paul Halloween get-together, we ask that people, please look forward to seeing school board members. That night, we will be in front of the Education Foundation office on Murray Avenue right near 6. You know, please stop by, and we look forward to seeing you. Be safe, be warm, and happy Halloween. Thank you.
Great, John?
I just want to draw attention to Minnesota Department of Health is, has a scholarship opportunity for students aged 12 to 17 who have been vaccinated. They can, they're giving away five different $100,000 scholarships to Minnesota State Public or Private Schools.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
I, I have nothing tonight.
I have one thing. Oops. Dr. Weber had talked about the School of Fish event that had happened, and my son was part of it. I saw tons of kids coming out of this event. They had T-shirts and fishing poles and tackle boxes. It was such a success. So thank you to Mike Fish, who put it on. Was it the Ed Foundation? Who provided all of the swag that the kids got.